Will Council please come to order? And will the Clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Present.
Oliver?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Hager Smith?
Here.
Mattingly?
Here.
Sutkin?
Here.
Watson?
Present.
Will the Vice Mayor please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin our activities this evening with a presentation. So I'd like to call Chief Clare up. And this is for the Virginia Association of Chiefs, the Police Life Saving Awards.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us this evening. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just read one of these citations and then present it to our officers. And this is especially an honor for me, being the President of the Chiefs Association this year, to come back and be able to present these. So these citations say that on September 25, 2024, members of the Blacksburg Police Department SWAT team were participating in training in Radford, Virginia. While transitioning between training sites, officers observed a person in mental health crisis leap from the Memorial Bridge in Radford into the New River. Officers immediately stopped and observed the lifeless subject in the water, communicated with the communications center, and called for local resources. But our officers immediately responded into the water, swimming towards the unconscious individual, while other SWAT members were gathering supplies for the rescue. This person was more than halfway across the river, floating downstream. These officers are jumping in with all their equipment on. The individual had extensive injuries. They provided emergency first aid, recovered him over a steep embankment, removed from the riverbank, and then transported to a local hospital, and survived. And so for these actions, they have been awarded the 2025 VACP Life Saving Award to Lieutenant Cale Craver, Sergeant Garrison Ellis, who couldn't be here this evening. He was presented his award earlier today. Officer Eric Howard and Officer Tanner Reed. So we just wanted to honor them this evening, give them the opportunity to be recognized publicly for the great work. Appreciate it very much. Their families are here, so we're going to go out here and take a few pictures.
Sure, that would be great. Well, anything else I could say seems kind of pale compared to that. But we do have an agenda, and I'll continue at this time. Our consent agenda includes approval of Town Council minutes from September 16 and September 23, a Resolution 10B25 to amend Resolution 7A25, which set the regular meeting dates for this council, to schedule a regular meeting on November 12, 2025. We have a boundary adjustment agreement. We're going to discuss that on October 28 in these chambers. Ordinance 2095, rezoning 2.7 acres of land at 1709 and 1711 Whipple Drive from planned residential to medium-density multi-unit residential district zoning. We're going to introduce that this evening, and the public hearing will be on November 12. Ordinance 2097, authorizing lease of space on the North Main Street Water Tank to New River Valley Unwired Ventures LLC and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Again, our action tonight will be to introduce that and schedule the public hearing for November 12. We have an ordinance 2098 to amend Town Council Section 1113 to increase the bad check fee. We'll talk about that on November 12 at greater length during the public hearing. Ordinance 2099, an ordinance to amend Town Code of Section 11-200 regarding business license requirements. We're introducing that and scheduling the public hearing for November 12. We have an ordinance 2101 to amend Town Code Sections 6-200 and 6-203 to reflect recent building code regulation changes and to establish civil penalties for property maintenance code violations. The public hearing is scheduled for November 12. We have a CUP 25-2, an automobile dealership and general commercial. That'll also be heard on November 12. And we have a CUP 25-3, dance hall use in the downtown Commercial District. The public hearing is on November 12. So if you want to get real banged for your buck, come back on November 12. There'll be a lot going on.
Mr. Mayor, I just thought of this. I hate to interrupt, but you might want to tell the audience that November 12 is a Wednesday night.
Oh, because November 11 was--
Veterans' holiday.
Veterans' Day, yes. Thank you. I should have said that. November 12 is a Wednesday. Highly unusual. I can't remember when we've ever done that before.
I don't think we have.
Yeah, but I think it's a good idea because that could be a problem. So I hope people are available, and we'll come on that Wednesday, November 12. We'll move on now to public hearings. Ordinance 2075--
For the consent.
Oh, yeah. What is Council's plan?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutkin?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Since we're all off schedule here, and I goofed a couple of things, let me ask you this question. Do you remember that there was somebody who was wheeled in at midnight to a public hearing in Morenton, and it wasn't Robert De Niro? Who was the guy?
Robert Duvall.
That's it, Robert Duvall, right? It was Robert Duvall. Okay?
It's also trivia night at the Blacksburg.
I knew you would remember. Thank you. Thank you. The town attorney fills many roles. Okay, moving on now to public hearings. Ordinance 2075, rezoning 9.7 acres of land at 3503 Holiday Lane from general commercial to planned residential district zoning.
And Caroline Collins will have the staff report.
Good evening, everyone. This is a request to rezone approximately 9.72 acres of land from general commercial and office to planned residential district. Here you can see an aerial of the property with the subject area outlined in blue. And just a little bit of overview of the request. It does include five four-story apartment buildings, a maximum of 480 bedrooms, a minimum of 455 parking spaces, and it also includes a separate request to vacate the Holiday Lane right-of-way. And here you can see an image of a concept plan that was submitted by the applicant. And regarding the Holiday Lane right-of-way, it includes approximately 35,000 square feet. And the applicant plans to use the right-of-way to construct a multi-use trail. All rezonings are evaluated per Section 1151 of the zoning ordinance for their conformity to the ordinance as well as the comprehensive plan. And then within the comprehensive plan, the future land use map does designate this parcel as commercial. So if approved, it would result in a loss of commercial land in the town. However, it's also designated as a UDA, which does support a higher density residential. And here you can see an image of the future land use map with the subject area outlined in blue designated as commercial. The comp plan also designates this parcel as an employment area. And the path to the future map shows a trail along Yellow Sulphur Road. Within the zoning ordinance, each district has its own statement of intent and purpose. And the purpose for the planned residential district can be found within Section 3110 of the zoning ordinance. The intent and purpose of this district can be met in a variety of ways. However, in exchange for this flexibility, the application plan and proffer are all binding. And here you can see a map of the current zoning with it showing the split between the general commercial as well as office. Within the zoning ordinance, there are three sections that govern development within town and within a planned residential district. The district standards can be created by the applicant. Here you can see a chart that shows the standards of the office and general commercial alongside the proposed priority standards. The applicant is proposing a density of 49.1 bedrooms per acre, which is higher than general commercial and office. And the occupancy is proposed at a family plus one unrelated individual or no more than two unrelated individuals. This-- excuse me, sorry. The PR district requires a 20% minimum open space, and the applicant is exceeding this by proposing 28% active and passive open space in a variety of ways. Within the zoning ordinance, you can find the multifamily use and design standards in Section 4216. And the applicant is requesting a modification to the street elevation section. This is due to the apartment building facing internal to the site. And here you can see a rendering of one of the buildings that was provided by the applicant. Typically with multifamily developments, parking is required at 1.1 spaces per bedroom. However, the applicant is proposing .94 parking spaces per bedroom with a total minimum of 455 parking spaces. The applicant is meeting the bicycle parking requirement by providing 120 spaces along with a bike pavilion that will hold 48 of those spaces. And here you can see an illustrative concept plan that was submitted by the applicant. There is a proffer statement that was submitted as well, and the proffers were related to substantial conformance, occupancy, as well as requiring the units to be rented by the unit and not the bedroom. And lastly, the Planning Commission held their public hearing on September 2 and voted to recommend approval of both the rezoning and the right-of-way request, 6-2 with one absent. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have for staff.
Questions?
Yeah, I just want to confirm. The occupancy requirement that they're proposing, that matches what we put in our small lot subdivision, right? Oh, ordinance?
I do not know what the--
I believe the Director of Planning is behind you. Thank you.
So--
Thank you. Yeah, I was just to say for the audience's understanding of it, it's a family plus one person unrelated to the family or no more than two unrelated. And that's what Jerry's referring to.
Any others? Can I quiz you a little bit, Jerry, on the Planning Commission recommendation?
You're the mayor, you can do what you want.
Not always. Come to find out. But the two that were on the Planning Commission who were not in favor, I think it was to do with bus access and where the walkway went. But can you fill us in?
One of them in particular really was hoping that the applicant would build or put more facilities in for potentially future bus access. So that was his qualm. The other, and Commissioner, his concern was he felt it didn't really meet the comprehensive plan. And he had concerns about this housing so close to the bypass and things like that. Those seem to be the big issues for each of them.
Okay. Thank you. Let's have the applicant's statement.
Good evening. Steve Semenous, the Ballzone Associate, 80 College Street in Christiansburg. Mayor, I would agree with Mr. Ford. I was going to mention that, you know, the two responses, the two no votes. But Jerry hit that nail on the head. Those were where we landed with those two folks. I just want to touch on a couple of the high points on this project. As you all know, we went through this at work session. And this property's been sitting vacant for quite a while. As we started the application, the Jones property, which is the property in the upper left-hand corner, came in. So we kind of started over, went back through the process again. So we're really hoping this project spurs new growth in that. That's one of the things in the comprehensive plan that it talks about, especially in the employment areas, where you want to see growth of employment. Well, part of that is residential, which is, as Caroline mentioned, why the UDA is sitting in this area as well. So we're hoping, similar to another project that Thomas Builders has just finished up in Roanoke at the Daleville exit, where they took down an old derelict hotel and redeveloped it into housing, that that will start to spur, you know, some future growth in this corridor where we have some older buildings as we're coming into town. But just a couple of the points. As Caroline mentioned, 320 units, 480 beds, so 32.8 units per acre, and just a little over the 48 beds per acre, which is allowed in GC, so 49.1. So this is not a really high, high-density project. The reason, obviously, for the zoning is we don't have commercial on the ground floor, and we're a little bit over that density. The five buildings we have, as mentioned, are one and two bedrooms, and they're split. So it's an even 50/50 split of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, which I think you all know is very much needed in here. And I guess the overarching point of this project is this is truly a market-rate multifamily project, which we don't really have here within the town proper. We've got Fieldstone that has some affordable and workforce components to it. But as you all know, a lot of what we have is purpose-built student. So this is more in line with what you'd see at the Highlands at Huckleberry, at the Adams at Pepper's Ferry. So a top-class, Class A multifamily project that's geared towards professionals, young professionals, that would work in Christiansburg and Blacksburg, at the CRC, at Tech, at the hospital. And that's the clientele, the product that Thomas Builders builds across central Virginia and southwest Virginia. As mentioned, the occupancy standard, that's something we worked with. So that is meeting that small lot ordinance. So the family plus one or no more than two. The parking ratio, while, as you all know, in Blacksburg, we do it per bed, we look at this as a per unit. Because again, it's not a student project. So we're at 1.42 spaces per unit. So if you think about that with the one- and two-bedroom units, that's very consistent with some of the other projects that Thomas Builders, you know, has constructed. The bike parking, as mentioned, we do have some of those, 48 of those are covered as part of what we worked out with Planning Commission. There will be electrical outlets within that pavilion to allow people with e-bikes to charge, also having car charging stations. And there'll be a rideshare pickup spot reserved at the clubhouse that you can see on the site plan there right in front of the clubhouse. We do have a little over 28% open space, but we've actually got more green space around that we can't count, that's in setbacks or in easements. So when you add all that up, it's about 38% of the property that's either amenitized kind of clubhouse space or outdoor green space. So we've got a high amount of outdoor space for our residents. The biggest piece came from, in one of the last iterations of the project, we had a small half-building in between the two buildings at the top, Building 1 and Building 2. We had kind of a 32-unit building. We kind of took that out at the last minute just to loosen the site up and give some more green space for those residents. And that reduced our density and knocked our parking ratio up a little bit more as well. We do have an eight-foot trail proposed along Yellow Sulphur, which matches the path to the future map that Caroline mentioned. And as part of the right-of-way vacation that's been requested for Holiday Lane, that's not required anymore. It wouldn't be needed anymore as the two rental houses of the Jones property, Rambler Springs property, come into this. So as part of that, we'd be constructing a 10-foot multi-use trail within that vacated right-of-way. So that would be built to town standards. And it's shown there just on the south side of the property itself. You can kind of see it. It's the darker green line there below Buildings 5 and 6 at the south side of the page. We've also got pet areas, other managed open space, and then the clubhouse and the leasing area and the pool towards Yellow Sulphur. The last piece I want to just go through, and just for benefit of the public, is go through some of the renderings and the images of the building. So again, a very high-end, high-quality constructed building. We've got folks from Thomas Builders here that'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the construction, if you have any questions on those. But again, for the public. So this would just be one of the perspective renderings of the project and the various elevations of the buildings themselves. I've stated this a couple times in our presentations. It's important to see, and I hope you all recognize this, there isn't a back. There isn't a back side to these buildings. They all look nice from all the elevations, both sides, in the front, the back, in both sides. As you can see, the detailing, the window patterns, it's just a nice-looking building all the way around. Clubhouse, again, similar. There's not a bad side to this. So this would be looking from the parking lot into the front of the clubhouse, the pool, and the patio space would be off to your left. Leasing in the exercise fitness area would be on your right. This is a two-story clubhouse. It actually has some outdoor space. That was one of the items we talked a lot about with the Planning Commission over a couple meetings, was since this is kind of an isolated site, we don't have parks right nearby. Make sure there's good usable open space, good usable amenities within the clubhouse. So this is a very large clubhouse for the minimal amount of apartment units that are here on the site. So again, this is the front elevation from the parking area, from the pool side, from the back, looking from the apartments up at the top of the hill, back down to the clubhouse, and then the image facing out towards Yellow Sulphur. And that's just, again, just an image of the right-of-way vacation. And lastly, just the three proffers, again, substantial conformance with the application, the occupancy restrictions. And the last one that we kind of added before our last Planning Commission meeting was these will be rented by the unit, not by the bed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Could you talk a little bit about-- I've got two microphones. I don't know which one works. So hopefully, one of them does. Could you talk a little bit about your conversations with the town regarding Blacksburg Transit's connection to this property?
Yes, happy to. So we had several conversations about that. As this project was developing early on-- I'm going to go back to the master plan here. It was important for Thomas and his team that we maximize the parking because of the location of the site. As we talked to BT a number of times, there wasn't any definitive timeline on service coming here. And I think you all may have received an update last week. I didn't hear that. So I don't want to assume what that was, but I understood that it could be up to six years away if funding's there, if the ridership's there. We looked at different ways that we could possibly get a bus stop or proffer a bus stop out on South Main, which made more sense to us than pulling a bus off on the Yellow Sulphur into, you know, a roundabout within the site. But we're not the bus experts. BT thought that would work. We do have it redesigned now that if a full bus did want to come into the parking lot, I know that's not ideal for them. We do have the turning movements available that you could come in. And we changed this right towards the end of the project, the little break in the islands that you see in the larger parking lot there in the middle. That will allow a full bus, a full-size bus, to come in and turn through there. That's another reason, though, because we don't have transit kind of guaranteed right now, that's another reason we put the rideshare space there to allow some, you know, some pickup and drop-off. And the Thomas Builders team is also, you know, they've talked about doing shuttles in-house if that becomes something that the residents would want. We didn't want to proffer that because I can't remember if this was maybe at Planning Commission. We talked about this, Mr. Ford. But some of the concerns that we've had in the past with questions on private shuttles, can they go on campus? Can they stop at BT stops? So there's some questions in that we couldn't get answers to. But that is a possibility that could be looked at in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't remember. It's been a while since I looked at the application. When did the hotel leave? And how long has this been there? Do you recall with all your process?
I've got it. I think I actually might have it written down here. Let's see. Hotel went out of business in 2020. And it was demolished, I think, a year or two after that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's time now for public comment. And I want to welcome anybody who would like to speak to this proposal to come to the microphone at the front here. And please begin with your name and your address.
Hello, members of the Council. My name is Stephen Gillespie. I live in this area, actually. I live at 201 Fairfax Road. And I just wanted to make sure that I have this understanding right. Because it looks to me like what they propose is a parking lot with five giant buildings, minimal green space, maximum parking for the particular project. It's not on the bus. They haven't incorporated anything about public transportation. And there's absolutely nothing green about. So I just want to say that Blacksburg definitely needs more housing, not just student housing, but we also need affordable housing. This is not going to be affordable housing. I do not think that, given the market rates, that people we anticipate it being housing for, working people that are at the hospital or going to, you know, any of the other places in town, young professionals, graduate students, I don't think they're going to be able to afford this. And I definitely think it's going to impact negatively traffic in the south of our town, particularly coming into that entrance. What you all are able to do as Blacksburg Town Council about any of this, I don't know. We do live in Virginia. So your ability is to, you know, try and do something to get this project to be something that it's at least a little better for Blacksburg as a whole is limited. But I am hoping that you all will be able to use whatever slight leverage you have to negotiate a better project for the whole town. And we will be looking for that eagerly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak under public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go on to the applicant rebuttal.
Just one thing, Mayor, just to the gentleman's response. We did have a traffic study that was done previously on this. And we did have our traffic consultant update that study and provide a letter to the Engineering Department consultant update that, that study and provide a letter to the engineering department saying there wouldn't be any negative impacts or any improvements warranted at that intersection based on the town and VDOT's guidelines when we started the project.
Can I ask a question? I think it's related to that. So if I understood correctly, this is previously a proposal for a large medical facility on the site, which would have even more trips than this would be. And so the, because the traffic for that one, for this would be less, then that kind of shows that this, no other improvements are necessary. Am I characterizing that correctly on the traffic study?
Yes, sir.
It would also be fair to say that the commercial, the medical, would be more of a buy-right entitled option?
It would have been, yes, sir.
Right, so if it was a viable option and it moved forward, you would have more traffic there by what the zoning allows.
Right, right.
I know there was consideration for a while of whether that could be active, housing for active seniors, and that also did not seem to be plausible to those who were exploring it. Remind us what the parking ratio is?
It's .9.
Pull up your presentation?
Yeah, I'm probably staring right at it, and I'm completely missing it. Yep, it was, right here, and it's highlighted for me. 1.42 spaces per unit or .94 spaces per bedroom. We're not maxed out at the parking, we're actually coming in a little bit lower, and our building heights are actually under the allowable for a GC, is that in district?
You have more green space than is actually required.
Yes, ma'am.
With a lot of our student housing projects, they come in and proffer money towards our Affordable Housing Fund or a percentage of units for affordable housing. Was there a reason why, like, we can't, I don't know, we can't ask for proffers, but...
We didn't on this one, because it's a market rate project, and we're trying to hit a lower price point anyway than what you would normally see in your downtown, you know, walkable, purpose-built student projects. So, yeah, we just, it just wasn't part of this, this application.
Any other questions? Thank you. We doing this in two pieces, or are we doing them together? Okay, so what is council's pleasure on ordinance 2075?
I move approval of ordinance 2075.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on ordinance 2075. Is there any, hm? Is there discussion?
Well, I'd like to start, since I served on the Planning Commission, I did get to vote on this already, and I did support it, and I do support it today as well. A couple odds and ends, both to put out there for the community as well as to answer some of the citizen comment, with a single that we had. First off, this is supposed to be a commercial property, and so, you know, it's been vacant for five years. Some folks have looked at it from commercial, and I think we are all very careful at giving up our commercial space, because even though commercial's kind of down right now, as we heard in the presentation this week, it will eventually come back, especially as our community grows. But it seems to me that it's just not viable as a commercial space, and it's holding out for a commercial thing, we could be there for a while. During one of the presentations to the Planning Commission, because we had three work sessions on this, as it turns out, two with the current applicant, there was a statement about the private school that's near there and down gradient from there, and they had some concerns about, about folks hanging out up there and everything. And coincidentally, today, returning to town about lunchtime, I've transited through that, and I happened to catch that there was some folks up there, and I was like, is that, like, applicant people working up there? But as it turns out, it was a bunch of skateboarder guys up there having fun with what's left. So to me, right now, it's a little bit of an attractive nuisance. And so if we can get it redeveloped, and another aspect in the Planning Commission we learned about is the applicant is very vertically integrated, so they feel that they can actually move forward and maybe, you know, get this out of the ground sooner, so that's very encouraging as well. Now, our applicant comment, the Planning Commission really struggled a lot with this one, because so much of what we deal with here at Planning Commission and the council is, you know, we're striving for connectivity, we're striving for mass transportation, and, you know, we're so focused on that. But this particular property is really kind of an odd duck, because it's kind of jammed out there, it's been kind of orphaned because of cutoff by the bypass. So it was a constant struggle of, of the reality of this site as opposed to our aspirational goals that we do for everything. Normally, we want to try to have less parking spaces and encourage more of the connectivity and the transit. But several planning commissioners acknowledge that you can ride your bike from there, and there's the potential for bus. But people are going to have to use their cars. And so they actually pushed to say, we're okay if you have more parking, because we need to acknowledge that unfortunately it is going to be a more automobile-centric development. So those were conversations that were held. Me personally, for all the different rezonings and things we deal with up here, especially for student-built housing, this one, it's almost refreshing. The density that they're asking is just slightly over what they could have with the buy-right. I mean, it's so minor that it's, it's hard not to be okay and excited about this one, because it's not some massive, huge building compared to what we seem to struggle with a lot. So for all those reasons, I do support it, and I hope it brings much-needed housing, because as one of our planning commissioners, whose full-time job is housing, feels that part of it is we just need more housing of every type. And so I think this will get us there, and so that's why I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I will follow that. I agree with our speaker tonight that this is not workforce housing or affordable housing, but that's not the intent of this, and I agree with what you just said, Jerry, that we need all types of housing in Blacksburg, and this does meet a demand for one- and two-bedroom apartments. It's a, it's a good location for that. Admittedly, you have to be in your car, probably, for most folks who live there, but you don't have to drive far, so hopefully it's cutting down transportation time for a lot of folks. I like the proffer statements, that the apartments are going to be rented by the unit and not by the bedroom. I like the occupancy being low, one person, unrelated with a family, or no more than two unrelated people. So I think it fills a niche that we desperately need in housing, so I plan to vote for it.
Thank you.
I'd like my colleagues to plan to vote for this as well. And the one thing that really gave me heartburn about this, because of course we need new housing in Blacksburg, and we desperately need it, but the lack of connectivity to the BT and the lack of connectivity to kind of where the action is downtown. And I can already hear the commentary that I'll receive after this, which is, why on earth would the town build housing right up against 460 like that? The unfortunate truth is, is that I, as a councilman, and we as a council, don't get to say, well, hey, we're going to start building some housing right here. I mean, we do in some ways, but we don't get to pick and choose where developers propose their projects. So although this isn't perhaps like the center of downtown, where I would prefer to see additional bedrooms added, it's still a necessary project in our town, and with the future prospect of Blacksburg Transit Connection, this is something that I feel very confident in voting for, knowing that it's going to be of benefit to our town.
I would just echo the comments that my colleagues have said. Up here, it's certainly not affordable or workforce housing, but it is a housing need that we have in the town of Blacksburg. I think that we need to look at housing comprehensively. There are certain developments that are going to include affordable housing or be dedicated to workforce housing, and then there are others, like high-density student housing, where we've negotiated to, where they either contribute to a, an affordable housing fund, or they dedicate a certain number of units. We've seen some recent projects like that. But there are other types of apartments that we need that meet other housing needs in the town of Blacksburg. And this, one- and two-bedroom units is something that's really difficult to find. I remember about 10 years ago, when I was buying my townhouse, I was previously renting, and there was about a six-month period of time where my lease was out, but I hadn't purchased the new house yet. So I was looking for a one-bedroom apartment in the town of Blacksburg, and I couldn't find anything. I didn't eventually get a two-bedroom apartment, but there's a shortage of this type of housing unit in the town of Blacksburg, and I'm glad to see that this project, although it's certainly not perfect and in a little bit of a quirky location, can help kind of meet some of those housing needs that we would have in Blacksburg.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutfin?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Moving on to ordinance 2091, this is a vacation of a portion of a public right-of-way at Holiday Lane. What is council's pleasure?
I move approval of ordinance 2091.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? I think we've had that discussion. Yep, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutfin?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Thank you. We will move on now to ordinance 2082, to amend subdivision ordinance sections numerous and multiple. And so I, anyone who would like to know precisely what they are is welcome to find this agenda online at the town website. Do, do we have a staff presentation?
Yeah, and we're going to do 2082, 2083, and 2084 combined staff report, and then you'll take action on each other separately.
Good idea.
Colley Casper has the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, so as Mark mentioned, this will be three ordinances, 2082, 2083, and 2084, and I'll do a combined presentation for them. Just a little bit of background about the ordinances, this is based on development, community feedback, mostly to clarify, streamline, and improve the development process and our land use regulations. There was a stakeholder group that met regarding this from September 2023 to April 2024, and since then, staff has been working on drafting the changes. The changes do include subdivision ordinance changes and zoning ordinance changes, there are also some minor changes to standards and specifications, and then town policies in the way we administer the code. As I mentioned, it's in three ordinances, I'm going to summarize them in five areas. It's a wide range of topics, but they can generally be summarized into topics related to street design, to street construction sequencing, to infrastructure timing, subdivision design, and then process. And then as we moved through this public process, we also had changes come through from the General Assembly with legislation that was adopted, so we worked with the town attorney to get those implemented with these ordinances as well, to make sure we're in compliance with what the General Assembly has adopted. So the first category is street design. This includes several topic areas, allowing roll-top curbing in certain zoning districts, allowing narrower streets while still meeting the Virginia Department of Transportation standards, requiring sidewalks on both sides of the street in more dense areas in town, and a few other sidewalk requirements. And then also adding criteria to help evaluate specific subdivision variance requests. That's primarily around street design, and that one does also cover some topics in the subdivision design area as well. I will go over two examples of the proposed street design changes, and then additional details were included within the ordinances and as, as well as the staff reports and staff memo. The first one here would be roll-top curbing. Again, this would be to allow roll-top curbing as opposed to our standard CG6 curb and gutter, which is what you see in most areas in town. It would allow it in single-family residential zoning districts, except in a few limited circumstances where there is infill, you would want to match what's adjacent to you, or in areas where our stormwater conveyance capacity requirements cannot be met, then it would revert to the standard CG6 curb and gutter. And these are just a couple images of what that roll-top curbing looks like, it's a little bit less of a vertical curb than what you might see in other areas. The other one from this category that I'll go over is sidewalks on both sides of the street. This does impact a few sections of the subdivision ordinance. This would be a requirement for the densities of R4, which is one of our single-family districts, anything that denser or greater. So basically, areas where you have quarter-acre lots or smaller, it could also include our rural residential districts. Really just looking at the lot size, when you have that more density, we'd like to see sidewalks on both sides, we see a higher density of pedestrians, we want them to be able to have space to move around. This also would allow for trails to be built in lieu of sidewalk. Right now, that's granted as a variance, but we want that to be permitted based on areas where we have our paths to the future map from the comprehensive plan, as well as based on adjacent existing conditions. Again, this is the idea of matching what's beside you, if there's trail on either side and you're in the gap, we want it to be trail rather than sidewalk. The next category is street construction sequencing. While this looks like one topic area, it is several changes, they're just all in one section. It's to allow more flexibility in when sidewalks, curb and gutter, and paving, both initial paving and final paving are completed for new subdivisions. The next category is infrastructure timing. Again, this really just has one area, it's clarifying when bonds are required in the process. This is ensuring that we get timely completion of subdivision infrastructures, whether that's in a phase or an overall development. Again, this is in a section within the subdivision ordinance, you can see those there, section The next topic area is subdivision design. I'll run through these, and then I'll go over two examples, again, in a little bit more detail. This is for setting new standards for flag lots, this touches both the subdivision ordinance and our definitions in the zoning ordinance. Also revising standards for the length of cul-de-sacs or streets with no outlet, clarifying where driveways can be placed, and talking about maximum driveway grade, revising road construction and connectivity requirements, to make sure that we have connected subdivisions, and then revising public utility and drainage easement requirements. The first one I'll mention here is flag lots. Again, this is both subdivision and zoning ordinance. This does revise flag lot regulations to include the following standards. No structures are permitted on the pole portion of the lot, you can't have more than two poles be abutting, so in these examples, this shows three and four poles abutting, we would have a maximum of two that would be allowed. 200 feet is the maximum length of the pole. Once you've platted them, you can't further subdivide them to create additional flag lots. Setbacks would be measured from the flag portion of the lot rather than along the pole. And then also that open space slots are exempt, we sometimes have open space slots that have unusual configurations, but it may be because there's a trail in them or something like that, we want to allow for that flexibility to remain. The other example we'll give here is driveway intersection distance. This is a pretty straightforward one, this is just replacing an existing diagram, the one on the left is the one we currently have. It's pretty hard to interpret, it's been copied a lot of times, and it's not very clear. We've replaced it with the one that's proposed on the right. The last category here is process, I'm also including the General Assembly changes and some of the housekeeping changes here. This does include revisions to our preliminary plat process, plan review timelines, and traffic impact analysis tools. You can see there's a lot of sections this one touches, primarily because of the way that preliminary plat review process occurred. It does remove the Planning Commission from that review of subdivision plots, and that's many of those sections. And then it also shortened the review period of site plan and subdivision applications, what we see on the administrative side when staff is doing reviews. And then the last piece there is just the sections that involve housekeeping changes. This is just a summary of our schedule, we did hold a public meeting in August, the notes, sign-in sheet were included in the staff report, this has also been posted, the changes have been posted on Let's Talk Blacksburg. You would have seen, in addition, we had a few questions come through that that we responded to, and we've had a few other inquiries. Planning Commission did hear this in September and recommended approval eight to zero with one absent on each of the ordinances. We reviewed this at your work session in September. We did also present to the New River Valley Home Builders Association as part of this process, we talked with them a couple times and shared the ordinance out as well, because it does have the greatest impacts on that, you know, that side of the building development And this is just a summary of which sections are included and which of the ordinances. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I just want to say thank you to you and to all of staff for undertaking this, because I know how comprehensive and involved this was for you guys, so thank you very much. And to the folks who are watching, and I know we have a couple of folks who are here with a student media class at Virginia Tech, so this sounds like a bunch of, like, deep-in-the-weeds planning stuff, but this has actual, real-world, practical, positive impacts for the future of Blacksburg. So thank you guys for undertaking that work.
Thank you, any other? Shall we do them all in a lump, or shall we do discussion on each one separately, or...
I think it'd be fine if you wanted to make a motion to approve 282, 2083, and 84.
Yeah, okay. Will someone do that?
Did you, citizen comment first?
Okay, public comment. On any of these ordinances? Okay, seeing no one.
I move approval of ordinance 2082, ordinance 2083, and ordinance 2084.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I, I mean, I agree with what Liam said. Thank you to staff. Also, this has been a long process where it did involve stakeholders and community members. At the beginning of Colley's presentation, she said the intent of this was to clarify, streamline, and improve. And I think that's something that no matter where you fall on the political spectrum and what you believe, that's always a good thing when you're doing that with regulations and making it easier. So, you know, I fully support it, and I think it's a great thing that, that we're accomplishing.
I do, too. And I hope that my comments will not be taken as critical, because I do feel gratitude for the amount of work that's gone into this. But in my recollection, it began something like three years ago, and that was, it was initiated by some conversations that I had with members of the development community. And I brought that to our town staff, and it got underway with our former assistant town attorney, town manager. And it went on for some months before it entered a second phase, and then continued for another year. And as you say, it is great to have careful attention to detail. It is important to have up-to-date practices and up-to-date documentation. We want it to be accurate, and we want to be responsive to our citizens. The shortened review time in particular, I know, is something that's asked for all the time. And I think that the eight-to-zero affirmative vote by the Planning Commission says something very important. But I do want to say at this juncture that the, it began with a request for three simple things. Let's try to fix three simple things. That was the request to me that I shared with our staff. And, you know, maybe what we can learn from this list of all the ordinances that changed was that the work is that complicated. Maybe you can't fix just three things at a time. But that was the request, and it went into the dozens of rule changes. And the request remains, I know you've had a conversation as recently in the last week, the request from many in the development community, not just here, but nationally, is can't some of these things be taken care of at the staff level? Couldn't we have determinations made by the knowledgeable people who, after all, staff are, are planning and engineering offices? And so as much as I appreciate all this work that has been done, I feel sensitive to the fact that it wasn't actually what was asked for, and I believe we were going to need to stay in a very robust conversation if we're going to address our housing and, and infrastructure needs. All that to say, thank you. I'm glad we did this. Anybody else?
If I've learned anything in my eight years of, of local government, it's that nothing in local government is quick or easy. So I appreciate all the effort that has gone into this, and I think it's much needed, and I'm, I'm very grateful.
And it did take the Planning Commission out of, of some steps. So it did, it did streamline, and I do appreciate all the work that staff did, and that the community put into it as well. Takes time to do good documents.
I think the ADO votes by the Planning Commission indicates their enthusiasm for removing themselves from some of the--
Yeah, I guess that's one way to interpret that. Yeah. We have a motion and a second on all three items. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutford?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye. Moving on to citizen comments. Anyone who would like to speak is welcome to come forward. Please start with your name and your address. And it does not, it can be on any, any topic of your choosing.
On December 9th, excuse me, my name is James Earthman. I'm a resident of Giles County, Eggleston area, and a resident off and on in the town of Blacksburg for over 50 years. On December 19th, 2024, a man violently attacked me in a Blacksburg because of a perceived traffic slight. He road raged. He followed me until I stopped my vehicle, and he approached my vehicle while I was seated in it. I had no interest in speaking with the gentleman. He criticized my driving, and I responded quite simply, "Fuck you," and I drove away. Not satisfied with that, he pounded on the roof of my car as I was driving away. I stopped my vehicle and checked for damage, and again, I attempted to drive away. He reached into my car and he sucker punched me in the face, and then he repeatedly tried to pull me from my vehicle. I attempted to leave. I was trying to leave. I struggled to get my vehicle into drive so I could leave. I reported this to the Blacksburg Police Department, and I provided them with dash cam video and audio of the entire interaction. They did nothing for approximately three weeks. They did nothing until WSLS 10 ran a story on the incident. And that hit the news on January 10th, and that's when the Blacksburg Police Department took action. My attacker had no driver's license. My attacker ran a red light and two stop signs to follow me and criticized my driving because of a perceived traffic slight. Again, the Blacksburg Police Department initially did nothing, and when they finally did act, three weeks later, they advised him to file a charge against me. A completely false charge that had no evidence, no foundation of fact to support it. But he was able to secure a warrant against me. And somehow, the local police department acted very rapidly and that evening came to my home to serve that arrest warrant against me. I had to spend a considerable amount of money to hire representation to defend myself, caused quite a bit of stress in my life, my family. All the charges against me were dismissed. My attacker was convicted. The attacker lives in his mom's basement, and therefore, the taxpayers provided representation to him. He also received guidance from the members of the Blacksburg Police Department, and that was recorded on body cam footage when they went to his house.
Mr. Earthman, you are at the end of your time period. Can you wrap up, please?
Yes, I can. I call that corruption. If the town council does nothing, I call that corruption. If the town manager does nothing about this, I call it corruption. If the mayor does nothing, I call it corruption. If the town attorney does nothing about this, I call it corruption. This is not the first time the Blacksburg Police Department has acted out against me and brought a false criminal charge against me, and you know this. And again, that was unfounded and not supported by any fact to support the charge or a conviction, and there was no conviction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on his citizen comments? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business. Okay, new business? Council announcements?
Well, I want to let everyone know that many of us here tonight went to our Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference this past week, and we just got back today. That was at Hotel Roanoke, and we went to a lot of workshops. We had a lot of great networking opportunities with other elected officials across the state, and I think we all learned quite a bit that hopefully, we can bring back and, and make some improvements in our own town. So I wanted to let the, the community out there know that. And I do want to reiterate what our town attorney said earlier this evening, that we're having a lot of public hearings in November, not on the second Tuesday like we usually do have our night meetings, but it's the second Wednesday. So the very next day from when we usually have our town council meetings, we're going to have it. So please, please, if you're interested at all in any of the public hearings that the mayor mentioned tonight under our consent agenda, remember it's the second Wednesday, 6:30 here.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would like to remind folks that early voting is underway. We have two Saturdays at the Blacksburg Rec Center, October 25th and November 1st. But you can go Monday through Friday to the Elections Office in Christiansburg. So please use your civic rights and duties.
And combining those last two announcements, on Election Day, there will be no work session for the Blacksburg Town Council as well.
I just, I wanted to follow up on Susan's thing about the VML. I was just thinking about it. Our last presentation today, we had a, a Federal Reserve person, the, the executive director of the Weldon Cooper School, and there was, oh, the director, Finance Guide Director for Carillion. And it was, it was just to talk about the current state of our country from the federal level on down. And the, the key word that was, the takeaway was uncertainty. I mean, the economy, there's just so much uncertainty about everything, what's coming out of Washington and how it trickles down to the states and ultimately local government. And for, for the takeaway for us at local government, serving you, the community, is that it's incumbent on us to, to do the work, to provide the services, and to provide, provide certainty to, to everyone in this very uncertain time. And so that was a good message, I think, for all of us. And I think it's, it's important for our community to know that we're, you know, we're striving to do the job and bring certainty and, and hope at the local level.
Thank you. And if that is all, we are now adjourned.